Moore.
Here.
O'Kane.
Here.
Shaner.
Here.
Scott. Waters.
Here.
We stand for an omen of silent prayer followed by a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Paul Baker, Airport Board of Trustees, you want to come up and tell us why you want to serve?
Thank you. Thank you, and greetings, Mayor and Council. I would like to volunteer to serve on the Airport Board for a second stint. My past experience, I think, speaks for itself, my knowledge of the airport's infrastructure and service needs. But as much as I support, and it's critical, that the runway extension and development with the 185th garner federal funding, quite frankly, at least from a public service standpoint to our citizens for commercial and even private aviation, that'll, when we achieve that, that'll be all for naught if we don't have creative new commercial air services growth, more departures, more destinations. I lived in Fort Collins, Colorado, for nearly three years recently, and I moved back to Sioux City about a year and a half ago. And I became aware of some targeted flight services by Colombian, Mexican, Latin American charter and air services, like Air Mexico, Latam, things of that nature, that really targeted to the northern Colorado demographic of individuals that needed to fly to places like that. And they had relationships with regional carriers into Houston, but you bought your ticket online from the South American and Mexican carriers. That also served Florida and places like that also, and they have hubs for other parts of South, the Atlantic side of South America. I think we need to get creative and really look at how we're spending our marketing dollars. And there were, I believe there's evidence that we're doing about the same way we did 10 years ago when I was on the board before. And we need to turn those into development dollars, whether that's a ticket pool with businesses, look at funding some ticket exchanges for leisure travelers that want to go to some of the destinations I named. Some of those airlines are, under the USMEF, former NAFTA agreement, able to come into ports of, parts of, ports of departure, airport departure sites like us. They do it in Eugene, Oregon. And if you know anything about Fort Collins and Eugene, Oregon, they're kind of our stepsisters. They're stuck between some major metropolitan areas that 60 miles or 100 miles this way or that way have great air service. And they had to get creative to find ways to get more landings. The more landings we get, then the more data we have from FAA to present to the Southwest or the deltas of the world. I really think Southwest is a possibility. The kind of market we have, our citizenry in the 15, 16 county area, the tri-state area, they don't mind going to Midway. They don't mind going to Hobby. They don't mind going to Love. And they like using Southwest to connect, to get to Dallas and Florida and many other areas. And so we changed some of our marketing dollars away from advertising around the nightly or morning weather in Sioux City media, and turn it into development dollars and really focus on some strategies like that. It'll take time. It'll take elbow grease. It'll take a commitment. Perhaps forming a nonprofit foundation, the Sioux Gateway Colonel Bud Day Airport Foundation, to raise some additional funds for these underwritements, you know, as another avenue or for other projects that we could, we could look at. I'm really committed to this, this board and this airport, this need, both professionally and my business. And I've been a user and a traveler and a citizen of Sioux City for 29 years now. And I have countless airline miles out of this airport from all the various, and I don't like it. I always check Sioux Gateway first, but, you know, in difference to my employer's budgets and things, I'm forced to go north or south many times. And we need to, those are some ideas I have to, so that me, my fellow citizens and I aren't forced to drive down.
Well, it sounds like you have some great knowledge of the air industry, which is fabulous. You mentioned Southwest Airlines now. How about, how do you feel about the discount airlines like Allegiant? Now, I've never flown that, but I hear people, you know, talking about it out of Sioux Falls. It's, you know, under $200 for these popular destinations, Florida, Las Vegas, et cetera. The biggest complaint, you know, is pricing for local people.
From here, definitely, yes.
Oh, it's so expensive. I can drive to Omaha without even figuring if you have to get a hotel room if you have a 5:00 AM flight or, you know, if you're going to bite the bullet and get up and go, whatever. But how, how would you feel about something like that? Is that on the horizon? Is it a possibility?
My previous terms eight or nine years ago, and I'm sure in fairness, in difference to the current board, those kind of charters, Allegiant, some of the other firms out of Minneapolis and different places have been approached. There was some, one thing you might have to accept is, you know, some seasonal service. It won't be every week, 52 weeks out of the year. But those kind of destinations, Tucson, whatever, and Florida, you know, for golf outings or ski into Utah.
Some of the casinos send their travelers. I have friends who go to someplace next to Vegas, to Harris.
International travel and entertainment conventions. We should probably send a representative to that a few years in a row and see on things like casinos or major resorts, like sandals and, I mean, hopefully, I don't know if they exactly do it, but I know some major resorts like them, conglomerates have those kind of flight packages. Another thing would be to work with Hilton and Hyatt and some of their vacation arms and, because they do also do packages to their major resorts in, in the warm sunny belts and islands. But no, I think, and I'm confident that the current board has worked on that. But again, it's a way to get clicks, to get landings, to get FAA.
And it's a new year and it's a new time, you know? If they looked into it four, five, 10 years ago.
You want to do a survey of what's Des Moines, Omaha, and Sioux Falls have and go after the ones that Sioux Falls, Omaha, and Des Moines don't have. There are numerous Sun Country and a whole bunch of other ones that, you know, you just get one or two flights a week.
Gosh, one a week. I'd be happy with that.
Paul. Paul, I wanted to let you know, I didn't know your background or experience extensively, but I've been sitting on this council now for eight years. And I just wanted to tell you this was the most informative and persuasive interview I think I've had in eight years. And I want to commend you for that and just tell you that I appreciate your passion very much. And I, I know when I sit up here behind this desk, I would say the number one thing that I would want of our commissioners or people joining committees is I endlessly want them to be creative. I want them to think outside of the box, do something different. What are we not trying? Where, what else could we be doing? And I know that I, I share some of your concerns and some of your thoughts. And I just like the creative flow of ideas. Some of the things won't work. You know, for example, the marketing dollars, that's something I often think about is how we can creatively utilize those. But I do know, and Mike can correct me if I'm wrong, but I know that those are grant funded. So sometimes we have, you know, different parameters of where we can use those dollars and what we can use them for. But I think similar to the flight school that we partnered with, Morningside University and Western Iowa Tech on the mechanic program, like those different creative solutions sometimes can really move the needle, so to speak. And so I just want to, I want to thank you for this constructive dialogue and your application and, and overall your interview, because it gives me, gives me hope there are a lot of people out there that are passionate.
One more thing, based on my international transportation experience, about 12, 13 years of it with JBS and Tyson IBP. I don't think we should close any doors on air cargo, air freight, especially since COVID. That's become a lot more competitive and with the various times like tariff debates and things going on. There's a lot of companies that air cargo becomes competitive. And with our geographic location between the coasts, I would see Sioux City maybe for one company, CMA or whoever, Maersk, that they'd want a cross stocking terminal load planning centralized warehouse adjacent to our airfare. If we could get one of those, again, that would, that would bring some needed business in and maybe a few jobs for Sioux City, too. We should look at, you know, what, what's the medical ambulance, medical air jet, medical helicopter industry need? You know, is there someone looking to expand, you know, again, for servicing those, that equipment, you know, mid-country, mid-U.S. like we are? Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Jessica, Board. Tell us why you, why it's good.
Now, Jessica, I said all that. That doesn't mean there's pressure.
Oh, yes, there is.
I promise, okay? Come on. Time to hit it out of the park. You'll be great. I'm confident.
Well, I, honestly, I really have enjoyed serving on the Library Board of Trustees, and that's really why I'm asking to be on it again. I am a user of the library. I fully support the, just the addition to the community that the library offers. We, I think the library serves people from all walks of life, and I'm, I've been very privileged to be a part of it. And so, very selfishly, that's really the reason I would like to be again on the Board of Trustees for the library. I'm also an attorney. I do think it is helpful that occasionally.
Well, you had votes and now you're losing them. Let's just back up.
We're doing pretty good for the members there.
Yeah, exactly.
Next thing, she's going back to school.
I knew as soon as you said that, it was, you're losing stuff, so come on now.
Well, my point was that I do think some risk aversion analysis from an attorney perspective is helpful for the Board.
Absolutely.
That's all we'll say on that.
For sure.
I'm glad you applied, too, and I, I think you look at things globally and you look at what, how to serve all the people. You don't pick out certain segments, and you, you really do a good job of having a total picture, which sometimes we lose that and we get tied up with small things.
Yes, thank you.
So I really appreciate your outlook on library services going forward.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much.
I just wonder, Helen, when you have somebody apply, then you don't show, does that mean you don't want them back on? I, I'm trying to interpret that. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We'll go to the consent agenda items, read through 12C. Consider them to pass unanimously unless a separate roll call votes asked for by a council member. If you want to speak on any agenda item, please come up as I read that item. If you want to speak on an item not under the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns. Remember to always state your name. Thank you. I need that. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Three is reading of the June 6th and June 9th City Council Minutes. Four is a resolution designating the airport fund as a special revenue fund. Five is a resolution increasing fees for transportation services provided by the transit system.
Mayor, I have a couple of comments to make on that to Mike Collette. First of all, it was pointed out to us that there hasn't been an increase in fees since July 1 of 2010. Secondly, I want to point out that the Sioux City Transit Board unanimously recommended adoption of the proposed fare increase. And this increase will give us provided uninterrupted service. Apparently, was, was it the Airport Board, Mike, that, or the Transit Board that had the public hearing that no one showed up? And, and it just shows you, I mean, it's a reasonable increase that will be put into place from $48 to $50 for the monthly unlimited ride pass. I was surprised to read that, though, that no one showed up for the, for the public notice on that. But I just wanted to point that out because I, my philosophy is the city has an obligation and a duty to provide transportation services at a fair rate, a fair charge, and, and do an excellent job at it. So I wanted to make those points on this particular item.
Can I add to that? Mike, is it six days a week if you have that pass that you can use it?
Yes.
So if it was six days a week, it's about eight cents a day. I did do a tiny bit of math on it. So it is very reasonable. The 2010, and it doesn't take away from the senior and disability monthly pass.
That's correct.
It doesn't take away for the day pass, which is $2 for senior and disability. The student pass is still staying at $4. The tokens are staying the same, and they're a bargain if you get 20 of them. So we are really, and I appreciate you and the Board, trying to keep these rates affordable and approachable as possible. And one eight cent a day rate increase in 15 years, I think that's pretty darn good. And I want to give you all credit for that. I know that you are in charge of it.
Yeah, when staff looked at this, we looked at all the fare types. And we still, and we did a comparison of other regional transits, and this one, we felt, was due for an increase. Doesn't mean that we're still not going to look at the fares as we go through our mobile fare pay process this year, but we wanted to get through the implementation of our mobile fare process first for the daily fares.
Well, and we do have to keep up with rising costs of labor and insurance and fuel and maintenance on the vehicles. So I understand that. But I appreciate you taking the time and just going through it step by step by step, making sure that we, we only do it once every 15 years. We're going to get it right.
Hopefully, more often than that.
Yeah.
Six are motion approving the total expenses for May. Seven are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving a transit joint participation agreement with IDOT for one light duty bus. B is a resolution approving a work order for RS and H for services in connection with the South Apron Reconstruction Project at the airport. C is a resolution granting a permit to Metro Fiber Net to maintain underground fiber adjacent to 4511 and 4600 Stone Avenue. D is a resolution approving a contract to KP Construction for the Business Highway 75 and Lincoln Way Storm Sewer Alfal Repair Project. E is a resolution approving a contract to Steve Harris Construction for the undersized water main replacement project. F is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to Thompson Solutions for the wastewater treatment plant HVAC rooftop units replacement project. I need to abstain conflict of interest.
Mayor, I have a question for Tom on that. I'm sorry I didn't contact you before now. I just, I just ran out of time, Tom. But on these items, like on F with the rooftop units replacement project, is that just a repair that we're making that's needed? That, how does this, how does this come into play with what we're doing with the wastewater treatment plant? It seems like we've had a lot of cost of repairs over the years. I think, well, hopefully, we're going to see a difference once we get the wastewater treatment plant up and running, the improvements that we're going to be making.
Tom Pingel, Utilities Director. This cost is to replace two units on the administration building for HVAC. The admin building probably has four or five different units. Our average lifespan for an HVAC system out there is about two years. And that's due to the corrosive environment of the H2S. We've tried the more expensive HVAC units where they actually coat the coils. We've tried different types of metals, and they all last the same. So we've just gone back to the traditional HVAC units. What's happening is the H2S is corroding away the coil, and that causes all the freon or whatever type of material they're using nowadays.
And the H2S is out in the air.
Yeah, it's just so present and so concentrated there out at the wastewater plant that even the remote HVAC units that are further away from where we think the H2S is concentrated, those, those don't last very long either. So we're hoping with the Phase 1 improvements, with the order control systems that are going on in there, it's over $2 million of order control that we're putting out there would drastically increase the lifespan of these units and other units and the health of our people out there.
That's my hope as well, because once every two years, bless the health, I was going to bring that up as well.
Yep.
Team out there needs to top priority. So, thank you, Tom.
Yep, I appreciate it.
Tom, it's probably way, and I just thought of this with the dialogue you're having with Dan and thinking about this more long-term. Look, I don't think, I mean, now would probably be the time to do it, but some of those buildings, if you're building a new plant, would probably be the time to do it, not necessarily at this point. But Goodwill Industries out there just had a ribbon cutting for their new facility and their new site, and obviously leaned into a lot of more sustainable energy solutions and looking at that. And one of those was geothermal and being able to have that cooling underground and be able to pump that air up and just really the cost savings that they were able to go through. And then it wouldn't be necessarily taking from the outdoors and cooling. It would be those underground or those larger tanks. I don't know all of the science behind that, but I just wonder if that would be more of a long-term solution. I know some of the tax benefits of necessarily those programs might be going away, who knows for how long, but I just wonder if there would be a more sustainable solution. If, yeah, sure, the cost upfront might be greater, but if you're not replacing that with that, that frequent or with that frequency, I think that could be something worth looking into. I don't know what that ROI or breakdown would be, but just a thought.
I know our engineers and our contractor are both looking at different options, so I'll bring that up. That's a great idea.
Because she was extraordinarily knowledgeable. Bridget, I believe is her name, up at Goodwill, The Great Plans, and I can get you her contact. But, I mean, she's the executive director up there and walked me through the facility and told me all about the different, I mean, they're going to be net zero. They're actually going to be, there are different projects that are adding back more than they're consuming. And not, I mean, I'm all for being aggressive, especially with those initiatives down at the wastewater treatment plant. That's why I believe in that, the gas and being able to capture that gas, but doing everything that we can within reason of making sure that there is a payoff for that and that it, that it's good use of taxpayer dollars and shows long-term vision. So, yeah, it just might be an idea we're looking to.
We'll do that.
I think even if you have geothermal, I think, I'm not a geothermal guy, but I think you still have to have a way to move the air.
And that's what I wondered, if it would come in and.
We had that on our house, Plumb County, and you do. You still have to have a unit.
Mm-hmm. So it still may be corroded.
It pulls the air out of the ground because it's a consistent temperature.
Correct.
Thought process of it, but it still has to go through an air exchanger to get into your house and get in.
So it still might corrode then, yeah.
We'll investigate all the options.
I know you're reviewing that.
Boys and Girls Home and Family Services put their entire 60,000 square foot facility on geothermal, so.
I know Briar Cliff's running geothermal, so.
Worth checking into.
Yeah. Thank you.
Tom.
D is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to utility equipment to install three EZ insert valve valves. H is a resolution approving renewal option four for the contract of order control services with USP Technologies for Order Controlled Chemicals. Eight are actions relating to personnel. A is a resolution accepting workman's comp coverage from the Iowa Municipal Work Comp Association for Chapter 411 Medical Only and Chapter 85 Employees. B is a resolution approving an administrative agreement with the Iowa Municipalities Work Comp Association for Administration of Chapter 411 Medical Claims Only for Firefighters. Nine are purchasing, A is a resolution purchasing or awarding a purchase order to Dakota Supply for Valve Box Risers and Valve Box Rings for the Utilities Field Office. B is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Sioux City Foundry for Valve Box Risers and Valve Box Cuffs for the Utility Department. C is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Southern Computer for Microsoft Licenses. D is a resolution authorizing the purchase of airport liability insurance for Martha J. Gallagher Risk Management Services.
Mayor, is that, Nicole, is that, that's a renewal, isn't it?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay.
Ten is an application for cigarette, tobacco, nicotine vapor product permits. Eleven's applications for alcohol licenses. Twelve are Boards Commission and Committee Minutes. Anyone to be heard on any of those items? Passes five zero. Thirteen's an ordinance amending Chapter 1920 of the entitled fireworks of the municipal code. The first consideration was approved June 9, 2025. I'll move second reading with.
Second.
So if we don't change this, you just have to, if you were to arrest them, you just have to arrest them under state charges.
Well, we, the ordinance would still need to designate the days. Otherwise, it could be allowed more than that potentially. We're only allowed to limit to the 3rd, the 4th, and December 31st. But you're correct. It could be written as a state charge or under the city ordinance for a violation.
So that's why I wondered why we'd even do this. Let the, just let the state do everything, because there seem to be a lot smarter than those of us that sit here. Just ask them. They'll tell you that.
There are a few other sections in that area of the code that does allow the fire chief some discretion regarding dangerous conditions within the city and what can be allowed or not allowed, as well as commercial fireworks as well. That's governed underneath that section. So that's why we're bringing it forward at the city level. There, there is some overlap with what the state is now requiring.
It's a joke, but okay.
I second that it's a joke, but I appreciate your informed, informed opinion or advice for us. Thank you, Nicole.
You're welcome.
Passes five zero. Let's just get it done. Anybody opposed to waiving the rule?
No.
I'll move second.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott. Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Third reading, second.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Yes.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore. O'Kane.
Aye.
Citizen concerns, any citizen want to be heard? Seeing none, we'll go to Mr. O'Kane.
Well, I want to start by thanking the Leeds community for inviting us out to their parade. The neighborhood was clean. The flags on the light poles were just great to see. Everything was in tip-top shape. The weather was perfect for it. And the, the paradegoers were very respectful and stayed away from the cars and didn't come out into the street, which was nice to see, too. Really had a blast. And I, I think Dan returned your car, right? Okay, I tried tempting him into a joyride.
I took it around the block a few times.
Just a few times. That was, that was a great time, and thank Leeds community for being great hosts, as they always are. This week, we will be meeting with the recruiting firm for the city manager position. They received several applicants, and they'll be going over kind of the list of, of some of those applicants with us so that we can get started with the interview process. We intend to be very, very transparent about the process. We'll, we'll try and get as much information out to people as we're able to. But this week kind of starts that, that process now that the application period has been closed. This Thursday is Juneteenth, and it's the, the first time in a number of years that we've had a Juneteenth celebration here in Sioux City. It's being hosted at the Sioux City Museum from 5:00 to 8:00. There will be food. There will be activities, and there will be a lot of good times and a lot of people, hopefully.
Who's hosting that, Matthew?
I heard about it from Monique Scarlett, but.
Yeah, I, I did, too. I just wanted.
We heard about it during our joint museum board meeting as well.
I think the NAACP. Pretty sure they are, yes.
I was wondering. We may get, you know, a question and email asking about it.
And that's everything for this week.
Julie?
I was going to talk about the Juneteenth celebration, too, so I have nothing.
Alex?
So this weekend is actually going to be a big and busy weekend here in Sioux City. There is Rib Fest going on at Hard Rock. So this weekend is actually gonna be a big and busy weekend here in Sioux City. There is Rib Fest going on at Hard Rock. It will take place right outside there in kind of the area of Battery Park. And so if you haven't been there, it's a, it's a, just a really big fun barbecue festival that actually the proceeds benefit Camp High Hopes here in town. And so they have multiple things, competitions, they vote for the, the customer's favorite or crowd favorite, and have different votes in different categories that you can go there and try all different kinds of barbecue. It's usually a really great time. And then they have live music and different things. So make sure to check that out. That's happening on Saturday during the day. And then, I forget what time June Jam is starting, but I think it's in the afternoon, where they'll have June Jam downtown all along Fourth Street, where they'll have multiple stages set up and tons of musical acts. And so make sure to check that out. There's gonna be a lot of activity. But what I would remind people this weekend is when you're outdoors and you're enjoying all of that, number one, stay hydrated, but number two, use sunscreen. It is scheduled, I forget if it was Friday or Saturday, to actually be the hottest day that we've had so far this year, I think ninety-six plus. So definitely make sure to be safe out there. I, for one, am one that tends to overheat, and so I will be enjoying that in, in very small increments. But I look forward to the activity and all of the energy in our downtown, and want to just thank those people that go into all of the planning and putting on stuff like that. I, I did hear that Food Truck Fridays has been a great success. Lots of people coming out. We're doing what we can to make sure there's additional seating options or adequate seating options, as well as shade structures and doing everything that we can with the organizers there. I would remind folks to make sure that we're parking in, in designated areas that are for that. I know it can be a little tight, so hopefully people are walking to there from maybe their respective work sites. But I, I know there are some different businesses in that area that have been gracious enough to allow customers to be able to park in those lots as well down there. So just look for designated signs. But as always, keep, keep supporting those different events. We love having them in Sioux City and just love to see them doing well. That's all I have, Mayor.
Dave?
A couple of things. The Grand View Band Shell.
Yeah.
Municipal band Sunday evening. Great turnout. We honored our flag, the United States, and we honored the Fathers on Father's Day. And it was just really a, it was a fun evening. Secondly, I just want to remind everyone that two days, July third, July fourth, are the two days that we can legally discharge and use fireworks. And I might add, we only want you to use consumer fireworks, not homemade by any means. Safety and responsibility are at the forefront, and I hope everyone can respect those two dates, from nine AM to ten PM on July third and nine AM to eleven PM on July fourth. That's all I have.
And once again, hope springs eternal for Mr. Waters.
I move we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Scott.
Aye.
Water.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.